The building board of the field is having a special meeting with the town planning board. And by the way, we also act as the planning board for the village here. But this is Tuesday, January 23rd, 7:00 PM. We normally have these on the second Tuesday, but this is a special meeting jointly with the town so that we can hear someone who wants to come in and tell us about the activities that they have planned. As a normal planning process, we would normally open up meetings here to public input. We are not going to have that tonight because this is not a public meeting, but you're welcome here with us. What we have is we have this special joint meeting with the Town of Webster Planning Board to discuss sketch plans prior to formal submission of a preliminary site plan for the approval of variances. And this is done by Tessie Plastics, and I'm not going to bother reading their addresses. It's 1500 Mitchell Dean Drive. The owner is Tessie Plastics. I'm not going to read the application for the tax number, but it's 065.50-1-1. There you go. All right. The applicant seeks to submit the preliminary plans for the site for Building 200, Building 210, Building 334 for future commercial development. That property is currently zoned as G1. What I'm also going to do here is go through a couple of items, just housekeeping items that we have here. Number one, we have one of our members is absent, and with that absence, what I'm going to do is I'm going to Larry Hall is absent. I'm going to appoint in one of our alternates, our standing alternates. Got to be Pete Adams. If he would just raise his hand and let everybody know that you're here. Pete has a fair amount of experience on the planning board and with these type of applications. So we're going to appoint him to that role tonight. We have full board of five people, plus we have two alternates here that are normally. Normally, what we have is we have Don White, who's our attorney. He is here. We have Mr. O'Connor to my left. We have Chris.
Craywick.
Craywick. I don't even try that most times. We have Kathy Bills, and then Pete Adams, and then down next to him is Dave Whitlock. My own personal name is Mark Nicholson, so that gives you an idea of our board. I'm going to let the town go through and interduct their folks, then we'll start up. We will start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and then I will turn it over to our presenters. Want to do that? Tony?
Sure. Catherine, you want to just call the room for our guys?
Okay.
No, we're missing a couple of them.
Mrs. Maltman. Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Fashani.
Here.
Mr. Jardina.
Here.
Mr. Cosell.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
And Mr. Malta is not here.
Not her mix in all either.
Oh, yeah, mix all, okay.
So that's all we have tonight.
Very good. All right. We'll understand, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Tony, would you like to lead us in that, or I can do it usually?
Now, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, gentlemen, why don't we stand up, tell me who's here, tell me what you're representing, and then tell us what it is you'd like to tell us.
Thank you. My name is Matt Napparoa. I'm a site engineer, and I've been retained by Tessie Plastics. With us tonight, Mike Adrian with Tessie. And we're involved as well. The project architect is VIP Structures that will be involved with some of the building work to achieve our goal here with regards to this development piece or redevelopment of the property here that we're talking about. And I'll kind of go into that a little bit. Tessie Plastics, three or four years ago purchased the 110 acres?
Two years.
Two years ago, about two years ago. And I'll laser it on my graphic. A property off of Mitchell Dean Drive that includes an area about 110 acres and a few of those buildings from Mitchell Dean, Resende, in that block area. Currently Tessie is utilizing Building 214, which is the white building at this location, and is looking to now reutilize the remaining pieces, which amounts to about a million square feet. And the proposed project, in which there's an interested tenant, will be a warehouse and distribution facility within those, frankly, big buildings with a lot of clear space. The proposed project itself is to, and we can flip to the other one, and I'll flip it here as well on my paper, is not to do any structural changes to those buildings, the big building being Building 200. My laser won't work on that screen. But as well, to provide the needs of this proposed tenant, the modifications to that building include adding a lot of truck docks and loading spaces for their needs. And as such, on Building 200, they'll be adding really full-depth truck docks on both the east and south sides of the building, adding a few on the, sorry, that's the east, on the west, east and west, and then just a couple up by the old cafeteria area. In total, about 99, just nearly 100 loading docks will be added to Building 200. This facility will be modified internally, and when we were in it, essentially it's open floor space, but it'll be modified to include gear to which the distribution network within the facility will be utilized far as incoming and outgoing and being able to handle the loads that this tenant is looking to provide. So the modifications to the site include perimeter heavy-duty asphalt areas to accommodate both the loading and then the trailer temporary storage on the perimeter as well. So when we look at what's happening here, there's 99 docks on Building 200 with about 216 perimeter trailer parking. At Building 210, there's 18 loading docks with 34 trailer parking. And as well, the current asphalt areas within the encompassed lot include additional trailer storage areas and then a significant parking for the employees and users of the facility itself. Currently, we're not looking at reducing that asphalt area, but seal coating and restriping to make it efficient. When we do the improvements, we are going to be greater than one acre of land disturbance or land conversion. Therefore, we will have to meet the New York State Speedy Stormwater requirements for water quality and water quantity. Currently, under this conceptual level of design, we're showing, let's call it placeholders of water quality and water quantity for the majority of the south and west sides of that building. So it currently drains through several drainage ditches to the catchment areas along the Resende Road. We're going to mitigate the effects of those additional impervious areas and then connect into the existing water course as it is today at rates of less than what occurred today. So that's our mitigation with regards to storage ponds. On the east side, we will do the same type of thing with some basins, and frankly, we have to take a closer look because we don't have as much open area on that side that we had on the other. So we're in the process of doing that analysis, and our goal is to have all of that packaged for the full submittal, which based on the timeframe that we talked about in our virtual call for February 20th, we'll have that taken care of. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is, and this came about when Tessie finalized the purchase of the access rights, and there is actually an easement right that was transferred with that subdivision plan. And the heavy dashed lines that I have on here are defined routes of easement rights for access, which essentially brings the truck traffic from this new warehouse distribution facility down Resende, south of Resende, and then to the east on Mitchell Dean to get us back to Salt Road and avoiding the areas to the west along Phillips Road in such and Caracas Drive. So that is already defined within the ALTA survey. We're memorializing it here, and that's going to be part of a traffic analysis study. We've brought on Amy Dyke, so she is providing that. She's with Pissaro now, and they are doing a traffic analysis. The data has been, existing condition data and counts have been collected, and they're in the process of doing the existing condition analysis, and we'll be following up with the proposed add-on and any recommendations from that. We again will have that report for our submittal on February 20th. I think we're here again to listen to input from both the town and the village members so that we can better prepare that application. But we're excited to be able to revitalize this section of the Xerox complex, and Tessie Plastics is looking forward to partnering with the village and town. One thing again on this graphic, just so that we're clear, there is the line out of the corporate boundary of the Village of Webster and the Town of Webster. Essentially, the buildings of 200 and 210 are in the Village of Webster. The parking field and a little piece of 334 are in the Town of Webster. Certainly, traffic impacts and stormwater impacts, we want to be partnered with the town as much as the village. But just to be clear of where that corporate boundary is, so we're all on the same page. That's what I have, and again, we're here to entertain or gather your questions so we can better answer them later on, and anything we can answer today, we certainly will try to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right now, what I would do is I would ask if any of your folks have any particular questions to initiate them otherwise?
Well, I think this was a good start because, I mean, we knew a little bit because we saw some of this before, but apparently this is all new to them 100%. So that's a benefit. The gentleman spoke in regards to the whole project. I think it's a great project coming in, and I think you hit it right on the head, and this is one of the things to discuss, the traffic and drainage as far as the town is going to be concerned. And that's why we asked for, you know, traffic study right up front as soon as possible to get that out of the way and get that clear. Other than that, you guys have got the hard part, we got the easy part. We've dealt with that a lot.
Thank you.
You're dealing with the building, we're dealing with the parking. That's as far as I need to go with it, and you did a presentation, showed it pretty much. Anybody?
Any other questions, anyone on that side of the room?
I think it's a great idea, great project. This is coming into town over here. The facility has been there. It's a shame it's been sitting there empty for so long, and this could be a start of redevelopment of that old campus over there. So I think this is terrific. Thank you for coming in.
Just a couple of questions on the Speedy's permit. Who owns the Speedy's permit? Does Xerox still own it? Does Tessie own it, or does someone else own it?
Well, I'll just say far as the development piece in which we are impacting what's there today, existing condition to now the post-development, that would be a Speedy's permit for stormwater for construction purposes, of which we initiate with a notice of intent, and at the end of construction with proper mitigation, receive a notice of termination. So that stormwater construction permit is Tessie's. If there's an outstanding and existing Speedy's permit, again, Speedy's has a lot of different envelopes as far as wastewater and discharges and other things. If there's a pre-existing Speedy's permit, I believe that would still be Xerox.
I'm with Xerox right now.
Yeah.
That's what I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure that...
Yes, so again, the construction has its own little envelope that we take.
So it would be a short-term change in that for duration.
Right.
Fair enough. Thank you. Other members of the board with questions here?
Can we know what the product of this company is?
I can speak to that. There's no product. It's receiving and distribution.
It seems like large scale.
What's that?
I think it seems like large scale. There's a lot of trucks in and out. Now, you have a pre-existing truck route funneling everything to Phillips and onto the expressway.
Right now, the agreed to is a funneling it to Salt.
Salt Road, I'm sorry. Salt Road, not Phillips. Now, what about secondary roads? Ridge Road, will that be impacted at all?
Again, well, that's where our traffic report is coming in. The request from the county of what that traffic report should address was handed to Pissaro and Amy Dyke, and she'll be addressing all of those points that were put in that memorandum.
Yeah, understood, but for the traffic report, but what I'm asking is, you got semis entering and leaving at those facilities. Do you, well, you would probably know better, expect any of those trucks to use the secondary roads instead of the expressway? Is the product that you'll be distributing?
I couldn't speak 100% of what every driver's going to do, but in their receiving and distribution, it makes way more sense for them to go right down Salt Road, get on 104 and...
Understood, yeah, understood.
They shouldn't be on the side roads. That's not to say that it'll never happen. It's just, you know, I can't guarantee my guys wouldn't go down the wrong road.
What about soil testing, water testing when you're going to be digging things up? This was an industrial facility in the past. Do you expect any contaminants in the soils? Or will they be tested?
They will be testing.
Okay.
Absolutely will be testing.
Water and test wells. I think test wells aren't in place anywhere.
There's already test wells on the site.
And as well, the impact to this would be short of some grading aspects, but relatively shallow depth, and the end product becomes an impervious cap over an area that had grass. So that potentially could help any environmental conditions that exist out there with regards to infiltration issues.
At what point does Seaker come into play? I mean, where do the letters set out after Seaker?
Once they officially submit application, that's when Seaker will begin.
That is correct.
At that point?
The village doesn't have a sketch plan review like the town does, so technically the village doesn't really, doesn't have an application in front of it yet to trigger Seaker.
Yeah, right.
So if February 20th will trigger it, they'll submit their application.
Okay, so that's one of the...
So at that point, the village intends to be lead agency, and so they'll do the appropriate notifications to the other involved agencies.
Our intent is a full EAF or the long form will be submitted on the 20th.
Is the warehousing and distribution operation 24/7?
That's what the paper website.
I'm going to say yes.
So it's going to be pretty much constant, trucks in, trucks out, all the time, every day, all day?
Worst-case scenario, yes. But again, I'm not running that business. I don't think that's the way that it is run. I think it's more of a large volume coming in at a specific time, large volume going out at a specific time.
We're a bit of a disadvantage because we have no clue who the tenant is.
Understood, and I would love nothing more than to tell you who it is.
We have no clue what's going to be warehoused or distributed, so, you know, and it impacts the traffic study. You've got to have some idea how many trucks are going to come in and out per day and what times of the day.
So for the traffic study, that data will be provided without the tenant use, but the traffic engineer has the truck numbers and the distribution of those trucks for her analysis.
Okay.
So I guess it becomes a, almost a signing of the lease arrangement is based on timing and publicity. And so the tenant has directed us not to disclose that at this point in time. There's still some due diligence periods that are taking place, but at the same time, there's also a clock that they're asking us to advance. So as soon as we are allowed, you'll be the first to know who the tenant is.
Would that be before or after you began to undertake some of these changes? And what I'm driving at is, how do we make that decision?
It would be before.
Fair enough.
It would be before.
Fair enough.
Unfortunately, we were supposed to have a meeting this past Friday. We had to cancel it because of a couple illnesses. I was hoping actually to be able to disclose that when we came in here. I realize that makes it easier for everybody. It's, it didn't happen, so it's another week or so out.
Understood. I think they went to the Bills game. There shouldn't be that much laughing when I say that.
I'm sorry.
Well, it was the week before they won, right? So I mean, that was still a good game.
Are the employees going to be working a 24/7 schedule or five days a week, three shifts or something like that?
There will be some employees that I think the majority of them will be there five days a week. I don't know how their shift schedule breaks down. I would have to believe a good bulk of it would be overnight.
Some of the information we have says 1,000 employees will be in there. Would that be 80% during the day, 75% during the... I think the question on are they going to be there 24 hours a day is valid in that it will impact the series of our other operations.
I think you're going to have more employees in there at night than you are during the day, if I was to give an educated guess.
Okay.
So should we suggest that maybe instead of asking questions, we came with an answer to the definitive one, maybe we need to address what we're actually going to be specifically looking for? In other words, how many trucks a day are going to be going in and out of there? They don't have to tell us who they are.
Yep.
But I'd like to know how many trucks are coming and going in the course of any time of the day? Are they running on weekends? That's the stuff that needs to get addressed, am I right?
No, fair enough, and all of that actually will come in with the next meeting. All of that will be submitted with the traffic study, including times, estimated truck flow, estimated personal vehicle traffic numbers.
With the approval of that Coca-Cola plant over at T-Bor Road, they're going to have 200 trucks coming in and out of there every day, so they're going to be using Salt Road also.
It's a massive...
That's going to be something that your traffic engineer is going to have to take into account.
Is the traffic study also going to contemplate the extension of Mitchell Dean from Salt Road back to where the Fairlife plant's going to be?
So Coca-Cola is building a Fairlife plant right now, so that's going to, and all their traffic is going to be diverted over to Salt Road for truck traffic to also go up Salt Road, split out to 104, and that's going to create a lot of traffic as well that your hospital leasing might not know about. So that, you might want to add that into the traffic study as well, see what that could possibly do.
I'm assuming we have an existing traffic study for that project?
I'm not sure. That's a town project.
Yes, actually, the Passaro reached out to me yesterday. They are the same company that did the traffic study for Fairlife, so they're very much aware of...
So they have all the information then?
Correct.
Excellent.
That's kind of why I reached out to Amy, because I knew she's pretty much well-connected around here.
Yeah, and we were able, they requested future development that we're aware of in that vicinity, and we provided them with all of the information already, so.
Typically, that future analysis is a 15-year projection that they, I try to do the best you can as a crystal ball scenario of what potential occurs, but that'll give you existing this development with whatever is currently on the books, and then a future projection. So it's almost like three different numbers in that traffic report that you're setting.
Is there a possibility that you guys, you know, talk to Xerox and come to an agreement or an easement or whatever to have traffic that's going westbound go out Phillip Road to that on-ramp to get on versus sending all the traffic down to Salt? Because Phillip Road, you can get on 104 going west, and Salt, you can go east.
No, no, no.
Is it the other way around?
Yeah, Phillip towards east.
All the east. No.
No.
Isn't that west? That goes George Paul.
It goes west, right? Yeah. So like east...
Phillip goes west, and it stops, stops either way.
So that could ease some of the traffic going on Salt Road if they were able to, you know, talk to Xerox and be able to use some of that both ways, truck traffic going out where there used to be a light, I don't remember, and I don't have good eyesight anymore, so is that, is that road at the end to the most northern part?
Actually, Phillip Road is more geared to have your traffic because of the multi-lanes there. That was built for Xerox, obviously.
Yeah, and that's kind of why I'm asking, because Caracas, you used to have a traffic light there, and a lot of truck traffic would go out that way as well as Mitchell Dean. Just a thought for you.
Just tell Pete to understand this.
I'm taking consideration the residential developments that's going on on the corner of Schrader and Salt Road, which are 240 townhouses plus another 30 or 40 single-family homes being built there, and traffic's all going to Salt Road.
So anything that could ease traffic on Salt Road, diverting over to Phillip would be good?
No, we can certainly talk to Xerox about it. We've got a pretty good relationship, so.
Well, you might have to reorganize some of your easements, access easements, because I don't know how you're going to gain access to that middle parking lot between Building 200 and 210, because if you're going off of that, you have to use that north arch road in order to get into the parking lot. So you might have to re, I don't know if it's Xerox, do you negotiate the easement for, or the access easement?
We'll continue to pursue what those easements were at the time of the subdivision.
Yeah, because it's all cut off, so basically...
Right, no, I see what you're saying. You know, that...
So it looks like...
So what that, so what that map is showing is actually the line between the town and the village. We currently have an easement to run up to the far end of those parking lots, the employee parking lot, and then again, that the heavy truck parking lot up on the town.
It looks like it's Denim Road that continues...
And Denim Road does make a loop right around, and it's in the backside.
Do you have an easement for that whole loop?
Yes, we do.
Okay, okay. Just because you...
Again, like I said, the reason this cuts it off right there is it's a town versus village. It's two separate drawings. I guess we should have dotted that in there. We can fix that on the...
I'm only going on what your engineer said.
I understand.
When he said it was the heavy dotted line with the easements, it includes that other part of Denim Road. Because that gets you back down...
Back down to the center?
To the loading decks on the, what is it, the east side of Building 200.
To the, to the loading docks on the, what is it, the east side of Building 200.
Is Phillips, are we thinking of this part? And who is the egress on Phillips Road? Can you go east? I don't think so.
No, you can't go, you can't go east on 104 if you're asking that.
We only go towards Buffalo. I just wanna make sure they didn't add something.
The easement right there come all the way along Caracas to Phillips.
Question, does your study address both the incoming and the exiting traffic? And, and where my mind is going with this is, you described an operation that was gonna take place in the building, and you're gonna put about 100 new docks in that building. Is there going, there, to my knowledge, and tell me if I'm wrong, there's no manufacturing gonna take place in there.
Correct.
Which means there's gonna be a fair amount of activity in bringing over material that you're then going to distribute and ship out of there. So there's traffic coming in, is it coming from off-site? Are you making it somewhere? I mean, and that's unfair, I recognize that question.
It is coming from off-site.
Okay, so they're gonna be, so they're gonna be adding to the traffic additionally coming in that way?
So the, the traffic report will be dealing with both movements in and out. And we'll have the total count as well, and we can break that out as far as the incoming versus outgoing.
You said that'll be truck traffic and employee traffic?
Yes, well, and we can segregate the, the larger vehicles from the pedestrian, the old vehicle.
So you'll be running the yard tractor.
Jumping ahead a little, maybe the front traffic going over Phillips.
It should just be jumping from across the dock to the dock.
Westbound traffic takes Phillips Road, eastbound takes Salt. It's a possibility to split them, so you got loading all the traffic down to 104.
Another question for you. I see on your site plan, the entire facility is wrapped with a security fence. Is this controlled access facility? Will every point of ingress, egress be access controlled? Is this a security fence that this thing is gonna look like a prison?
No, it's regular chain link fence, just like what's there now. Right, currently, there's a chain link fence around two-thirds of those buildings and, in all honesty, most of the buildings on that campus.
And actually, divide down, a lot of international business zones. Within the, within this area, there's a lot of difference, because Xerox had to break off individual business zones for their purpose. So there's a lot of, a lot of tents on that property today, and there'll be some removal of some and then adding, making sure there's a secure perimeter for this tent.
But for all intents and purposes, you wouldn't consider this a secure facility for a security force for the building? Is the ins and outs, could it be inferred that the materials coming in and going out are of a sensitive nature to warrant a secure fence?
Not in the sense that you're alluding to.
Well, I'm just, I'm just putting out there.
You're running me down the road, I can see where this is going.
Because you won't tell us what's coming in and going out, so.
It's just your standard chain link fence like you'd have around your house. It's, you know, I think, I think they want an eight-foot rather than a six. But it's still a standard, there's a lot of eight-foot fence on that site currently.
So are all the roadways gated?
Uh, the ins and outs on, into those buildings will have, will have gates. Whether or not they ever close, you know, typically in an operation like this, you either have IDs or you have a scan system as the truck's rolling up, you know, they're identified, that they can drive right in. Same thing with the employees, they badge through, or they park in the parking lot, they come in and scan. I mean, right now, Xerox has access control, we have access control in all of our buildings, you have access control in all of your buildings, in the looks of it. I mean, it's.
But I mean, truckers in and out, they're not.
No, but they'll be identified. Yep, no, I, I don't see it being random trucks coming and going.
So one, one thing that you said at the beginning that piqued my interest, you said no structural changes. I see several significant structural changes, because you're gonna be demoing some buildings, you're gonna be adding structural, you know, a lot of structural changes just to add the doors, plus you're talking to small addition to connect some of the buildings.
So, so in your world, yes, there'll be structural changes.
Okay, just in case, sorry, Eric.
I'm excited, and you're not used to like, you know, we're not building a million square foot of building here. We're modifying what is there. Certainly, in your world, there's gonna be significant structural changes to put all those overhead large doors in. And that's why VIP is, they've already spent two days in the facility seeing where we could do this and where we can't.
Okay.
So, but yes, yes, thanks, Eric.
Yeah, just, just to even clarify a little further, none of the doors are actually structural to the building. You know, the facility is freestanding, even the exterior walls aren't actually structural.
Right.
You know, it's, it's a free supported, column-supported building, so.
But even demoing some of the buildings that you're talking about, and adding a small that's still structural as well.
So ju- just so everyone is clear, the, my color because of CAD, the magenta are existing pieces that will be raised and to allow essentially on this edge, a straight line of loading. And this, this area right here is an existing loading area that just has a covered canopy that the tenant wants to have similar for all of the vehicles that they back into the, the structure of the building.
Is the demolition gonna take place all at once, or are you doing it individually one at a time?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is the demolition going to be done all at once? You've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, I'm trying to get it correctly. You're going to do that one at a time or all at once?
So the exterior docks, as far as the removal of those, I'm assuming, once we start moving forward, the same company will be doing them. They'll go one right after the next and just take them down. Their, their metal frame sitting on a, on foundations are relatively easy to take down. It's a, it's a pretty straightforward process. The existing interior docks, as Matt had alluded to, they, they don't want interior docks. You're trying to back trucks into a darker space, they want it all uniform, straight across. Those will just get the, the bottom end filled to floor level, and the docks will be moved out to the front edge.
So if I've got that correct in my mind, this is a bunch of dock doors attached to the outside of the building?
Correct.
The exterior wall?
Correct.
This is no backing in?
Correct.
As we all have seen a couple of those.
Right, and the ones that are being demoed are the back-in style.
Okay.
So it's, it's building onto a building, you're actually pulling the trailers into. Those will be removed, and it'll just be a straight row of docks all the way down that
I guess when we talk about construction schedule, I mean, that's almost, Mike will have some control, but it's means and methods of once that awarded contractor comes in and says, okay, there's gonna be a hardline schedule to get the entire project done. And the, that selected contractor will be involved with setting his first, second, and third. But the intent here is it's one contract, and it'll happen in a rapid fashion.
I see you're projecting a thousand employees, is there a potential for growth? Do you realize your restart in existing parking lot is 1700 parking lots, almost 1800 parking lots? Is there a thought?
I will, I will be honest with you, we did have discussions, but that is, I think, what we all determined was worst case, so we wanted to come into this level of giving you worst case scenario. We will define that further with the, with the tenant and get those specific numbers along with these other data that we're talking about. But in our mind, as Paul will tell you, engineers tend to be engineering conservative, so we're, we're trying to give you worst case scenario with that round number of a thousand employees.
Okay, so the 1700 is not the worst case, the 1000 is the worst case?
That's, that's our understanding, yes.
And then where is this in relation to the Xerox remediation site?
So Xerox remediation's actually out in the employee parking out there.
Do you dispute the respite, and is there any kind of deed restrictions for disturbing the surface of this parking lot and also the paper remediation site right across the street that says Patron?
Remediation site across the street.
Caracas Drive, the big black area?
It's an abandoned land.
We won't be, we won't be doing anything in that area.
Is there any deed restrictions for activities that you have in this parking lot area? Because of that site, it's just immediately adjacent to the project.
Not that I'm aware of. The only thing we're gonna do in that parking lot at a, at the very maximum would be to repave it. We're not, we're not digging out in that parking lot or.
I, I understand that, but, you know, repaving project, you know, projects, you could wind up tearing it up and whatever. There were certain parcels out here that did have deed restrictions on them. I think that's something we ought to know, is that this area still has a deed restriction over it.
If I'm wrong, we don't have any restriction out there in the world.
You might have that possibility.
What's your desired occupancy date? Are you talking 2020 and '04?
I'm gonna say first quarter 2025.
So about a year's time?
I think it's, I think it takes that long to get this done.
Okay.
Other questions from anybody here at the village board? Questions you've got. Derek, Derek, we talked about maybe having trucks go down, they're gonna go westbound on 104, go down to Phillips Road. What about trucks coming in, could trucks that are coming eastbound on 104 get off at the Phillips Road exit, and the Willows going westbound get off at the Salt Road exit?
I guess at this point in time, we're gonna investigate that, that traffic pattern off of 104 to the site, both in and out, so that, and I, I think, you know, operationally, you discuss that with the tenant and do the best we can to minimize the, the impact of the neighborhood. And in concert with what we talked about, the, the other potential impacts, Coca-Cola, the residential development and such, and it come up with a plan. I don't have that answer sitting here today, but we'll talk to our traffic consultant and the tenant and do the best we can.
And it's not just the truck traffic, it's the thousand employees.
Understood, understood. And, and that shift change and when that happens and all of that, I fully understand.
There is an implication, by the way, the striping is in the, the driveway for the large parking area, the employees can be in driving.
Understood.
The only thing I would add to that, looking at it, I would encourage you not to look at Route 250. You could bring people off there fairly easily, bring them down, but I think, right now, it only has two, two lanes of traffic under the bridge that go to the north. They immediately close to a one-lane traffic, and then when you get down by Orchard or Kittleburgers, you go one lane and goes down the other way. And I think if you've got trucks out that way, or bring them in that way, I think that's Other questions?
Actually, I think this has been good. We're all together here, we all got the same education this evening, so all on the same page with it. And again, I think we've hit the highlights.
Right.
Traffic, some drainage, and I think those are gonna be the main things. When you go to a public hearing, guaranteed, that is going to be the main topic. The site, that building is not gonna matter to the people along Phillips Road and Salt Road, it's the traffic going by. And that's what you should get, the real address. And I think you're at the right track with that.
And, and again, tomorrow morning, I will be talking to our traffic consultant, bring up these points and tighten that up. And I think come public hearing, she will be standing side by side with me. I'll wear my vest and we'll see that.
During the, during the duration of the lease, you guys plan on staying, Tessie plans on staying, the ownership, you don't plan on selling anything off?
As far as I'm aware, I'm not selling anything. Not my intent. No. It's a lot of work.
Been good. Mark, on behalf of Mark Board, thanks for getting together with us.
Thank you, and likewise, I appreciate you guys coming down here and having some thoughts. Anybody else here got a comment or question? Everyone's all set. You got any for us?
No, again, we, we appreciate this opportunity, and this helps us to, to put ourselves in the proper, proper footing for that submittal on February 20th and that upcoming, again, joint meeting in, in March, I believe, is what was on the agenda scheduled. We look forward to it and moving this forward for Tessie and, and our tenant.
Understood, thank you very much.
And we hope to disclose that to you guys. I think that one's a lot.
Thank you. All right, for, for us then here, with that, with that being done, unless you guys have got something else, I'm gonna close it. Close it done. Very good. Thank you all very much, and have a great night, and drive safe going home.
Thank you.